Hey, everyone. Thank you for being here today. I am Teresa Fabua. I am the vice chair for Planning Commission. We'd like to welcome everybody today. We're going to start with, go right ahead with our meeting. We're hoping that our chair will be here soon, but since I am the vice chair, I will go ahead and start this. Time is very crucial, so we're going to go ahead and start. Okay. I'd like to open the meeting at, okay, let's stand for a pledge of the flag. Where is the flag? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to do the roll call.
Satori.
Present.
Fabua.
Present.
Neris.
Here.
Beniza.
Here.
And Katoar is absent for now.
Okay. I'd like to, approval of minutes for May 7, 2024, PC meeting minutes, and of June 4, 2024, PC meeting minutes.
Motion for approval, please.
Second.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to handle, give this to Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This item is the consideration of the city's housing element. There's a general plan amendment and zone change involved, and the project numbers are up on the screen. So, we're going to, this is a somewhat lengthy presentation, but I'll try and keep it as short as possible. We're going to, at first, give an introduction to what the housing element is and some of the key things that are contained within it. Each of you should have a binder that has the actual, what we call the revised draft housing element. As indicated in the city staff report, this document has been, has been reviewed by the state of California. There's been some back and forth between the city staff and the state HCD staff, that's Department of Housing and Community Development, to make sure that the document is essentially adoptable by our city council. So, that's taken quite some time to even get it here. And there's a lot of work by both the consultant that helped us put it together, the city staff, as well as staff at the, in Sacramento, that worked on reviewing the document. So, there's been also a considerable amount of public input that's occurred over the last few years. The city's held a workshop, given presentations to the city council. So, this is something that's, although new to the Planning Commission itself, not necessarily new to the public. Other than, for tonight's meeting, there was notification sent to some of the, not some, any property owner within 300 feet of any site that was being rezoned. So, we may have some comments on some of the rezonings, and that's part of the implementation aspect of this. So, I wanted to just kind of give an overview of that. But, so get into the presentation now. The housing element is one of the city's seven mandated elements. It's actually the only element that has significant implications to all other general planned elements, including the land use element. So, one of the things, for example, that we're doing is changing some of the land, well, one land use designation and some of the general plan language to allow greater densities. But it interacts with the city's land use element as well. The elements are basically chapters of the city's general plan, and there's, there's at least seven of them, as mandated by state law. It's the only element that's subject to state oversight. So, a state agency called HCD, Housing and Community Development, reviews the city's housing element before we even think of bringing it to you for consideration for adoption. There are a lot of state laws that pertain to housing elements, and the staff at HCD makes sure that our element conforms to all of California's laws with regard to providing housing construction and zoning opportunities. The housing element, it used to be updated every five years, and that changed in this round to every eight years. But the review is a little bit more stringent. And the state's really begun to take a very close look at what cities are doing with zoning and land use and requiring that the, for example, any of the sites that we rezone have to allow the housing development by right, which basically removes any environmental review because SEQA only pertains to discretionary projects, where the city council or the Planning Commission has a discretionary action to take. So, that doesn't exist, SEQA doesn't apply. So, it's actually a really big thing.
Give me one second, Michael, I'm sorry. I failed to announce that for public participation, there are three ways to submit public comments. First, email your comment directly to the planning division. Second, submit when comments via the city's website. And third, attend the meeting in person. To email your comments, simply email a comment to the planner identified in the public hearing. Notice or send the email to, I don't want to read out loud, there's a long email there. Public comments may also be emailed to and by including Planning Commission public comments in the subject. To submit a comment via the city's website, please visit www.dailycity.org. Agendas to complete the public comments form. In the comment field box, include the item number and/or title of the item, as well as your comments. Three, to speak at the meeting in person, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submitted to the staff member and as early in the meeting as possible. All written comments received by 4:00 PM on the meeting day will be provided to the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. Any written comments received after 4:00 PM on the meeting date are not guaranteed to be received by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Person with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office or Michael Van Longerson at 1-991-8158 as soon as possible. Thank you so much. I apologize, I failed to state that part for our participants.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for that. So, the housing element is organized itself into several chapters, and tonight, we're going to focus on a couple of those. And one of the, probably the most important, or the one we spend the most time on, is the regional housing needs assessment. We're also going to talk about the AFFH and some of the policies related to the housing element. And AFFH stands for affirmatively furthering fair housing, if I think I got that right. So, here are some of the laws that were passed since the last housing element was adopted in 2015. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the purpose of these slides is to show that there's a number of laws that we have to comply with, including streamlining, removing roadblocks to development. The state of California is very, right now, is geared to removing impediments to housing construction. And one of those things is, as you'll see, is removing future discretionary review on the part of the city. There's a thought that that can sometimes hinder development, and it's a very deliberate effort to try and remove that, as well as also minimize, if you will, the amount of hurdles that people who want to build housing, developers who want to build housing, have in the interest of providing more housing to Californians. This is the affirmatively furthering fair housing. Housing elements must assess fair housing issues in the community, analyze areas of opportunity and access to resources, identify housing sites that foster an inclusive community and provide equitable access to house, to resources, identify strategies to address barriers to fair housing and include a program to implement those strategies. And we'll go over what our program is. So, the RENA process identifies the total number of housing units separated into four affordability levels that every local government in the Bay Area must accommodate for the period between 2023 and 2031. Primary role of the RENA methodology is to encourage a pattern of housing growth for the Bay Area that meets the needs of all residents. And that's according to ABAG. That's the official statement of what the RENA is. And these are the income categories. They're basically broken down by different percentages, between extremely low income, all the way up to above moderate income. And we can slow down and answer any questions that you have. But essentially, these are the income limits for four-person households in Samiteo County, beginning with extremely low income at $58,000, all the way up to above moderate income. Those would be households who own, of a family of four, that earn over $223,900. And then there's obviously some things in the middle. So, when we talk about the RENA, there are income groups, categories, that the housing must be provided for. And there's assumptions made that certain densities produce affordability. It's also assumed that ADUs produce affordability. So, we're able to, our consultant, really, takes all of the units that we could possibly produce and kind of massages those numbers and makes a list, and we're going to go over that, of the existing sites in the pipeline that are ready for development, even projects that are under construction after a certain date, as well as potential future projects. And if those things together don't equate to the number of units that we need to construct, then we have to rezone land. And that's exactly what the city staff will be recommending the Planning Commission forward to the city council to do, because we don't, we don't currently have enough zoned land to meet our RENA. So, absolutely.
Because that's, that's critical, the fact that the law says we tap down a certain number of units that are, that we will be able to have over a period of time. And we do this compliance work, basically, to show that we are complying with them. And so, what would be some of the things that would happen? I understand state funding could be cut off from the city. What are the things that happen if we don't actually comply and come up with a plan to show that we'll be able to meet the housing as required?
Yeah, ironically, there's a cup, there's, there are some things that are ironic. One of the things that we could lose is a funding for affordable housing projects. And that's kind of like one of, ironically. But there are also other things that we can lose funding for, even like infrastructural improvements. So, one of the ways that the state has hooks in us, if you will, is to make sure that we have a compliant housing element, and we apply for, for funding from the state. And so, that's essentially the answer to your question. It's, it's a big deal. Yeah, it means, it means millions of dollars to the city. Yes. You're welcome. So, this slide shows a, what's the process of the RENA. And I'll try and speed this up, because it's a pretty long presentation. But basically, the state HCD requires the different regions. And in the Bay Area, that's ABAG, develop a number of units through demographic studies that need to be constructed. And in this region, for this round, ABAG determined that about 441,000 dwelling units needed to be construction, constructed. And it allocated that to Daily, portion of that to Daily City with 400, or 4,838 units. In Southern California, it's a different thing, called something different. But here, it's ABAG that allocates to Daily City.
Either way, is that, Michael, is it because of the, where are my location at?
It's got to partially do with the size of the city and it, and, and our location, yeah. And some cities have a larger RENA in the Bay Area, and some have a smaller one. It's kind of population dependent, sort of, yeah. They, they try and do a jobs housing balance, too. It's a, it's a very complicated formula, and it spits these numbers, and yeah.
Your Honor, are we tonight making a specific plan to amend the general plan?
Yes, and it, we, the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the city council to amend the general plan. But more important, and including the replacement of the existing housing element that was adopted in 2015 with this housing element. So, that's the way the general plan would be amended, and some other ways we'll go over, as well as some rezonings.
I, Your Honor, I have observed lately that we're doing a lot of specific plan amendment to the general plan. When was the last time we have a general plan amendment? I haven't, haven't heard anything yet. It should be at least every 10 years. It's mandatory under the law that we have to have some sort of general plan amendment. What is the needs of the, this time?
The general plan was last amended in 2013. The, the whole general plan was updated, I mean. If the general plan's-
11 years, that's too long.
It's, it's getting there.
We, we have to have to plan this, because we cannot just be doing this every, every now and then for a specific plan, depending on what our needs, depending on what we want to, to happen. So, I urge and implore the, the planning department, really to, really to see to it that what are, how many hectares are available in the city yet?
Not many. Well, we're going to go over that, actually.
I was just asking that to one of the council members, that the state is mandating cities to, you know, they come in and build, it's mandated. But then how much land does the city have to do this?
Not a lot.
How much do we have to give in to that? And going back to what you're saying, Mr. Satori, is there any legalities of, or policies that general plan amendments has to be in a certain amount of time to revisit?
Yeah, yeah.
Every, and how many, every what? Every so, in three years, in 10 years?
There's no legislated number of years that the city has to update its general plan. But generally speaking, what actually happens is that the EIR associated with the general plan can kind of get stale. And so, cities tend to, around 15, 20 years, cities start to look at updating the-
But you say that eight years, every eight years?
This is housing element, though.
Okay.
Yeah, that's mandated by law. The housing element must be updated. The city can only amend the general plan four times a year. So, that, that may be something that you may have heard. So, there's a limit on the number of times per year we can change the general plan.
Because I remember, because I have been here for almost 30 years. The last time we have this during the time of Pat Martel, the general plan amendment, wherein there was a summit. A lot of people coming from all walks of life really participated. I think I, we have to see this again, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this slide shows the income allocation of our 4,838-unit RENA among the income groups that I described previously. So, we have to make sure that not only are there, is there capability to build 4,800 units, but they have to be allocated by these incomes. And again, there are assumptions made about density that kind of go into formulas that the states agreed that the city's proposal works. So, one of the first things that we have to do is, one of the first things of preparing an element, a housing element, is to take a look at the housing sites that we have. And there are certain sites that make the list. And there are sites that are in the process of being made available for residential uses via rezoning, sites that are vacant and zoned for residential uses, and sites that are not vacant, but that can be redeveloped to allow for a higher density or more intensive residential development. And projects that have been approved, issued building permits, or have commenced construction prior to the RENA baseline date. It's hard to read this, but this is essentially our initial list of projects that are in the pipeline. So, these are under construction, projects that are, have building permits that may be issued inside the planning period between 2023 and 2031, et cetera.
Point of objection, Your Honor. How many acres of land are still available in Daily City for housing? And how many are still available for commercial use? And how many are still available for industrial use? Or we don't have it?
I, that answer is might be in the general plan. I don't have that figure off the top of my head. The residential one, we should be able to figure out, because if we add all the acres up-
Because, Your Honor, my question is leading, because there are some complaints here that it might create a lot of havoc in their parking space and so forth. That's why, if the general plan will be inculcated to them, or it will be, they will be informed of what to do. That's why I'm saying, we cannot just be acting on or reacting only based on the needs. We have to see it, see to it that this, we have to have a long range or medium term of allocation of resources, especially the acres of land available, availability. We cannot just say, oh, this is vacant, let's make it affordable land, affordable uses of residential. No, we have to be, more or less, we have to have a plan that really can work out within the city. I'm saying here, based on the general interest, public welfare, and general interest of all people here. We cannot just, oh, we want to build it because it's vacant. And to me, putting up more affordable housing makes the city less, less conducive for business. And that's why I'm, based on my experience. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
So, basically, there's a list of sites that can meet our RENA, and the consultant, Placeworks, has put together a map that shows the location of each one of those. And I won't get too far into that, but there are sites in the Bay Shore that are on the upper right-hand side of the screen. There's the, we got to count the Teacher, the J E S D.
That's part of it.
Yeah, that's in the middle, on the top. 305 East Moore is there. And then, yeah, some of the other sites are in, just scattered around the balance of Daily City. Yeah, we get to, we get to count some of the stuff that's under construction. 45 Midway Drive, Midway Village is getting counted, 550 units there.
Would you consider that's the hugest, that's the biggest one that counts?
That's the biggest, that's the biggest thing, that's the biggest project. Yeah, it's the biggest housing project under construction in the county, I, I have been told. This project was approved and has yet to be built, but we get to count it. So, this, these slides just show some of the projects that have been approved. This is under construction in the Bay Shore, 323 units. Or, I'm sorry, this is actually 133 units, that's the typo. Point Martin. 99 South Gate, the Planning Commission and City Council just approved this. This is where Burlington Coat Factory is. So, we get to count that as in the pipeline. 2321 Geneva Avenue, which went through the Planning Commission and City Council and kind of stalled, now is subject to the city's CMU zoning district. That's, that gets to be counted. Ten Park Plaza Drive, which is a Kimco proposal that was approved a few years ago, is also counted. This is essentially where the medical offices exist, in between, what is it? Sleep Train and John Daly Boulevard.
Nations, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we would replace that building. And then, 699 Ceramone, which went, came before Planning Commission and City Council, just in the last year. This was a huge portion of meeting our RENA, 1,150 units, and that's been approved. So, of course, we get to count that. 493 East Moore, at the corner of East Moore and Sullivan, northwest corner. We get to count that, it's 72 units, all affordable housing. We talked about 305 East Moore, we got to count that. That was just recently completed, but we still get to count it in our RENA. So, when all of the projects that are in the pipeline are added up, and again, there's calculations made for each one of the income levels, that's compared to the number of units in our RENA, and we come up with a 1,216-unit shortfall. And that's shown, just for ease of reference, if you're interested in looking at it in the housing element, it's at table HE 54A, page 168. This is basically a screenshot of that table.
Michael, can you repeat that? So, regardless of everything that we have already and will be, we're still short?
Yes, yes. Yeah, 4,800 units is a lot of units, yeah. Even after the approval of-
This one.
J U H S D.
It doesn't light up.
We're still short. So, when we're short, and most cities are short, that's, that's not, we're not unique in that way. Some cities aren't, but most are, and we're one of them. The state says you need to have an adequate sites program, and there are criteria for what that has to include. Sites must be appropriately zoned enough, early enough in the planning period to provide realistic and viable development opportunity. Where land inventory does not demonstrate the supply of suitable, available, and appropriately zoned sites to accommodate the RENA, the housing element must include a program to provide the sites. And that's another way of saying that you need to rezone property. Adequate sites program must accommodate 100% of the shortfall. That was on the previous slide. And the zoning ordinance must allow the residential uses on those sites by right. No city discretion, no rezonings in the future, no use permits, no public hearings, no coming back to the Planning Commission and city staff. They have, it has to be by right. And specifically, not requiring any approval that would constitute a project pursuant to SEQA. And that's another major thing, because SEQA only applies to discretionary projects. And when something's non-discretionary, there's no SEQA review. So, this is actually a very important thing. One of the things that isn't mentioned here is that there has to be developer interest in the sites. We can't go and find properties that were the, even if they're vacant, if the developer says, if they have expressed no interest, especially, especially if they've actually got existing buildings, where there's been no developer interest. So, the state will take a look at that and say, yeah, how do, you know, how do we know that's actually going to be redeveloped? So, and, and one of the things we have, for example, and we included in, as an attachment in your staff report for, from, for the Seaton Parcels in particular, is that AHMC, who owns those properties, has expressed some interest in, in redeveloping those. And, yeah, so, and, and that's an oversimplification. But there is an interest in having a wellness village in that area, and we attached the letter, letter for you. So, when we talk about rezonings, at this point, and this is a couple of years ago, the city staff took a look around and said, well, how much vacant land do we really have left to rezone? And there, there really isn't a whole lot. One of the parcels that, and we'll get into each one of these, and maybe we should just do this. But this table is HE 52 on page 161. It shows the, it shows the rezoning sites, how many, how many-
Is that page three of your report?
It's, it, it, as a matter of fact, that is summarized on page three, yes. This provides more information, but yes, it's, there's a, there's a good summary. Thank you, Commissioner Nurse, of this table on page three. And maybe we should just get into it in terms of which sites these are, because this is just really hard to read. But the, the unit count has to be a realistic rezone capacity. So, the city, the city consultant and HCD do a back-and-forth negotiation about what is realistic. Even though the zoning in the general plan may allow a certain number, that number gets reduced by a certain percentage, because it isn't deemed to be realistic. And so, that's why we kind of put that word there.
Your Honor, how do you determine shortfall? Shortfall of units? How do you determine it in the city?
The shortfall?
Yeah.
It's basically based on the, this table, where we have the RENA on the left side, and then the underutilized, the vacant site capacity and the proposed, proposed, moving from left to right. We have the, the RENA, then we have the proposed and approved projects, the vacant site capacity, underutilized capacity. And then we get credit for an enormous amount of ADUs that are built. And Daily City is unique in that way. We add that all together, and then we subtract it from the 4,838, and that's where we get the shortfall. And that's the 1,216-unit shortfall. shortfall. And that's the one thousand two hundred and sixteen unit shortfall. So we get to, we get to include quite a few number of different categories, including what, you know, a lot of ADUs. And we're still short one thousand two hundred and sixteen units. And that's explained in this.
Is it because of the expansion of population, or because of migration?
Well, the forty-eight thirty-eight is based, it's, the rena, beginning with ABAG at the region, population growth, both natural and immigration is included in that. There's a, it's, it's
Because just like Daly City, our population is hundred seven thousand, three hundred fifty-three. Now, sometimes it goes down.
It does go down, right.
So how could it be a shortfall of units?
But the long-term projection is that it goes up. So, yes, you know, there's immigration, people have children, there's natural childbirth, there's all these demographics that are put into these numbers that basically
Because I remember, Your Honor, about seven years ago, there was a shortfall of, I think, forty-three thousand, two hundred here in the entire California. Because of, first, it's expansion of population. Secondly, there are a lot of people getting out of California because of the standard quality of living. It's very high here in California. That's why some are transferring to Arizona, Texas, Nevada, and so forth. So that's why I'm saying this. So, do we have to do it constantly, or by linear calculus that it should go down, it should go up? I don't know.
Well, it trends upward. Most people that, the population, people may move out of California, but generally speaking, they move back, and then
Because the moment you get out of Daly City, I know some Filipinos, the moment they transfer to LA or Sacramento, they cannot come back anymore because of millions of dollars of
Could I have a question, Madam Chairman, when the floor is open?
What's that?
No, I was gonna ask a question that you raised, which made me think. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I guess the question I was gonna ask, because I think it's where you're going, Commissioner. We have a number that we're stuck with, and we're trying to say, our population changes, maybe we can change the number so we don't have so much shortfall. I think that's what you were thinking. We'd be able to match it with
No, it should go up or go down. That's the point.
Yeah, I get it.
Constant.
But I guess my question is, is can we, as a city, or as a board, or anything, have an impact on lowering this number, or is this the number that is just assigned to us that we have to match, we have no control over?
That, at this point, we have no control over it.
So we have no control, we can't change it? There's no way we can write something and say, our population has changed, and therefore we're assigned this number, this is it, we're stuck with it?
Yeah, we're, we're stuck with that four thousand eight hundred number.
It's a trend.
There are some cities that call appeal the rena, those efforts generally go
So we're stuck with this number?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But I wonder if other components of building this number can be participating? As far as schools, as far as hospitals, as far as, you know, the density or the food shortage that we have for our community. I wonder if there's any way we can tap into that. I'm just trying to follow up. The gentlemen's here, that they brought up a really good point, you know. Of course, that number is built with all the components, but while I was reading all the letters that some of the community were able to email their concerns, it does make sense, you know. While the population is growing tremendously, and the state is mandating for us to build and build and build, is mandated for us to build and build and build. But what about the public, what about the community's concern? What about the residentials? Do we not matter? You know?
Well, from the state's perspective, providing housing to current and future Californians is the primary goal. And so when, if you ask if, yeah, people matter, that's exactly why we, all the plethora of laws have been adopted, because it's an easy factor of supply and demand. When the demand is great and the supply is the same, or not, not keeping up with demand, then prices go up. So while some people complain about having things, you know, new apartments or something built next to them, there are a lot of people out there, and this isn't a secret, and the news media is a constant story about how expensive it is to live here. And so the state leadership, the state legislature and the governor's office have taken a number of steps, and maybe we kind of glossed over all the laws that they passed, to make sure that there is zoned land so that developers, because that's who build the, that's who builds the housing, can, can do so.
And also, Your Honor, Madam Chairman, do you have any study about also houses that is underutilized, or actually like in Daly City? There are a lot of people who have been staying here in the house, big house. There are only two of them, which is actually good for ten. There are one, one of them, you know. Do we have a study of this? Because we're only looking at the shortfall, but we are not looking at the underutilized houses. Like probably some of those people here, who's been staying here for so long, probably they have their own house, and probably they have a big house, they only have one of them. Especially those who have been staying here for so long. So
There is
If we have a study about this, like inventory of houses which is being underutilized, I know Daly City is, a lot of elderly here, that's their only one, but they have a big house, mind you. And is this a part of the study that we are trying to analyze tonight, Your Honor?
So the housing element is required to analyze something called the vacancy rate, and I'm trying to find, and the vacancy rate, of course, changes over time.
I can cite you a lot of examples here in Daly City, which is a big house, sometimes there are only one or two of them, or probably the husband died, and the wife is the only one, taking care of, it's a big house. So to me, there is an imbalance here of study. We only look at the, we're only looking at the side of the shortfall, but we are not looking at houses that is big but is underutilized. That's my point.
And, and the state has an answer to that, too, and it's called the ADU law. The state requires that the city of Daly City, because many homes, their, the space contained within their walls
Additional unit?
Provides additional units, yes. There's no discretionary review of that either. We approve ADUs, not over the counter, they go through a building plan check, but that the ability to construct an ADU is very, very streamlined throughout California, not just in Daly City. And yes, there, there is an analysis of the vacancy rate. In Daly City, the vacancy rate has hovered around one percent before. And when we have a vacancy rate that's below five percent, we have an unhealthy housing market. That means that the house prices are going to go up, the rents are going up, and that's exactly what we see.
Because of supply and demand?
Exactly. It's
That's the point.
Yeah, it's just basic economics, right?
So I have a question. The question is, is that when we make our applications, and which we're doing now, and we are making the findings, and we send it basically to the State Department of Housing Community Development to review, and then either approve it, or say, no, it's not going to be approved, does the basis, the, the objective basis have to be based upon a study? And did we have that study, and was it done by professionals that are certified to do this, that are recognized by the state?
Absolutely. The, the city staff actually didn't prepare the housing element. We hired a consultant called Placeworks that undertook the housing elements. First, first time we've done this, actually, because this housing element was so complicated, we had to hire an expert to do exactly
Do they do this for a lot of cities?
Do this for a lot of cities, yes. And they work, they're actually located in Sacramento, and they work with HCD. They're very familiar with all the laws and all the intricacies of the city meeting the rena. And it was a very incredible effort, really, to put the pieces of our rena together in such a way that the state has essentially pre-approved this housing element. And so, yes, the answer to your question.
There's a letter in there from the state saying that
Yes.
this has been approved.
Yes, we attached it.
Yes, I saw that.
So, probably should continue to
Sorry about all the questions.
No, that's fine. That's what we're here for, is to ask questions and get them answered. So these are our, yeah, just examples of projects in the pipeline. I think I discussed those. Adequate sites program, yeah, there was a second section of the adequate sites program. Okay, so these are the proposed rezonings. So with the proposed rezonings, and this is a list of them, again, on page HE fifty, or page one sixty-one, table HE fifty-two. And then, so these are the actual sites. So beginning with site number seven, at five twenty-five Ceramone Boulevard. So this was, even though it shows the entire site, what really is happening here is that the existing planned development zone that applies to this, and this is Ceramone Views, and a large portion of this site's actually already in the pipeline because it was approved. But there's a tip of it that's essentially between the P and the N here, that the zoning required that a hotel be constructed there. And in the seven years since the approval of this project, we have not seen any hotel come to fruition. And we need a housing site, and it seems like housing is a more logical land use here. The property owner does not object to this, and is
I think we have approved that ready a long time ago.
We, yes, three hundred and twenty-three condominiums
What happened to that?
Well, it just hasn't, it hasn't happened yet. The answers to those questions
Ten years we have, I know, we have approved that like ten years ago, or more than that.
But it's locked in the zoning, so they can, they can still build it, and there, there will be a residential building built on this property someday. It just, it's a matter of
And in front of that also, we have already, we have already approved the integrity of that, that tall buildings, possibly.
They were, they were tall.
I don't know what happened.
Thirteen stories, maybe, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah.
So this would be, this would be changed, we would be asked to change this.
Yes. And what we're, what I was saying is that what we're really changing is the zoning to allow residential uses on a portion of the site that was only allowed to be a hotel. And that's generally here where my mouse is pointing, in between the P and the N, generally speaking.
That'll gather us another hundred and forty-nine.
Yeah, yes, it's a one forty-nine, yes.
Is that where Denny's used to be at?
No, Denny was on the, in Ceramone Shopping Center.
Ceramone, okay. On the across the street, okay.
So, yeah, so we need to redesignate this in the general plan to very high density, and we're gonna change the PT zone to allow residential uses only, because if you recall, part of the program is that it can allow only residential uses at a pre-specified density. And so that's the first site. The second site's actually a city-owned property at the tip, it's just north of eighty-eight Hillside, and this is addressed to sixty-four oh one Mission Street. This is a vacant site, it's site eight on the, in, on the map. And this provides a twenty-two unit realistic rezone capacity, although it'll probably be more than this. So the thing that we need to do here is, this is in the CMU general plan designation, so there's no general plan change needed, but the zoning needs to change to, from allowing only an office use to allowing only a residential use here. And the building height would be, one of the things that we didn't highlight in the staff presentation, but the state's required that the CMU zone go to one hundred and fifty feet instead of one twenty. So that would be up to one hundred and fifty feet on this site.
Is this the top of the hill?
This is top of the hill.
Oh, this is the landmark?
It is, and north of landmark, yes.
Yes.
We call that eighty-eight Hillside, yeah, but that is landmark, yeah.
Okay.
So the next rezone site, even though it is actually comprised of four different properties, is adjacent to Seaton Hospital. So this, we are not changing the zoning of the medical center itself, but some of the land around it. The, these three sites are owned by HMC, here where I've got the pointer, and this site is owned by daughters of charity. And these sites, HMC is attempting to build what they call a wellness village. We've attached, just so that there's disclosure to you, we've attached a letter from HMC to the city staff outlining their proposal. And this set of sites sort of came to us while we were developing the housing element, and we had a shortfall of sites. And the HMC, who owns the property, is very supportive of this effort. And, and again, they represent these three properties, just to be clear. And the state has accepted these sites as being able to contribute toward our rena. We would need to redesignate, so currently these sites are designated H O S P, which stands for basically hospital, in the Sullivan Corridor specific plan, and they would be, need to be redesignated to R H in the Sullivan Corridor specific plan.
Question, how would, how would you take care of the how, the parking element then? Because that is the parking lot for the hospital.
Right. It's part of the parking lot for the hospital, but yeah, you're right. The hospital currently uses this for parking. And so what would likely happen is the hospital itself has a ground lease with a ownership, and very likely, the provision of parking would have to be negotiated and continued into any future leases. This isn't something that the city necessarily dictates, though, just to be clear. But if the hospital did need parking, it would need to negotiate that into a ground lease of, of one of these properties, and that parking would be provided along with the residential parking, and probably subterranean sort of a thing.
Yeah, but the hospital would not be able to continue as a hospital without parking. I mean, I'm sure that we have a requirement that for that building, there has to be a certain amount of parking, I would think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they take it away, in order to put something else there, they would have to build something or somehow match it.
Right.
So the hospital does not, then not have parking.
Right. We'd have to take a look at that, actually. The Sullivan Corridor specific plan is kind of its own law. It, and it's important to note that, so this H O S P designation and in the zoning ordinance actually has no height limit currently. It has no parking regulations. We would have to look to this regular zoning ordinance to see if parking was a requirement, and if that applied inside the Sullivan Corridor specific plan area. But that's, you, you raise a good point, and it would be something that'd have to get worked out at some, at some point in the future.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, my boy's house is right there on Buena Vista, and they cut down all those trees that was lining on San Fernando, and it's a clearer view now, even with the parking. And that parking is always full. So if that ever happened.
It'd have to be something that's, that's
Where they're gonna park.
Well, they wouldn't be able to, they would have to, or they would not be able to develop it.
Right. The value of the, we're kind of going down a rabbit's hole here a little bit, to answer the question. The value of the medical center to the ownership of, to the people that they own, just to be clear, and I don't know if I actually pointed this out, the same people who own the land underneath Seaton are the owners of these parcels. The value of this building is such that they would, they would need to, they want to keep, it's essentially a tenant, so to speak. They need to keep that tenant happy and keep them viable. They just spent a whole bunch of money on an earthquake retrofit of the building. So they want that use to remain viable, and it's kind of a thing that, that would have to get worked out in the future, and we have to put some trust in that, that, that would happen. And that's normally, because that, it's not, it's more than trust, really, that's how those things kind of work themselves out. The ownership of the hospital is going to need to keep that as a viable use, and parking is one of the ways that it does that, and so it gets worked out. So these sites would need to be redesignated again to the residential high designation, and they, they would be rezoned to R three multiple family residential. One of the things I did want to point out, in case I haven't already done it, is there is no actual development being proposed at this time. So, but to be clear, the zoning is changing to a, a zoning designation and a general plan designation that does allow residential development without any future public hearings. And that is something that is very deliberate, that, again, the state has required. The city staff didn't come up with the idea of doing this. The state of California is saying, you must do this. There's no SEQA review either in the future. So, and, and the buildings, and we're gonna get into what the R three zoning district is also being changed, and we'll go over that in a future, a future slide, but that's also important to pay attention to, because we do want to provide full disclosure of what's, what's happening with the rezonings.
Your Honor, how about the hospital? Is it, is there a plan to demolish the seventh floor up, up to twelve? Is there a plan?
There is no
Because it's, it's a, it's a moribund place now. It's nothing.
No, there's no plan to demolish the hospital, or
No, no, that, that entire hospital, seventh floor up, up.
The seventh floor?
Up, going up.
Nobody's communicated any, that's a
That's what I understand, because it's, it's no use.
Yeah. No, there's no, as a matter of fact, the, the concept of
Well, nobody can pay for it, because it takes about a million also demolish it.
H and, AHMC has communicated to the city staff, and it's in that letter, that the whole concept here is that there's a wellness village that's created. That, they see that the development in the future here could be supportive they see that the development in the future here could be supportive to the hospital use. So, that would run in contradiction to that they're trying to demolish above a certain floor.
Because that hospital is already, I would say, useless, because it's not compliant anymore to a, a hospital, even the wiring, everything's practically nothing, nothing. So, I think that there's a plan, but who knows who's going to cause the demolition? It takes also millions to demolish seventh floor up.
Well, yeah, and to use it as any other thing, the zoning for the hospital is locked in place as a hospital, there's no other use that it can be.
Because, Your Honor, I, I can't, I cannot figure out if the city will just allow it like that in a, in a moribund state. It's a white elephant state, where it's been there for almost more than ten years now. If I were, i, i, in there, probably the city can, can pressure them to do something about it, because this is public service, that's, the, 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 the place is really, I would say, is not being used, utilized. So, I'm just speaking aloud, because we are here as commissioners, we are here to, to really give advice to the city council what to do also, helping them also for the sake of a general interest, public welfare, and public safety. Thank you very much.
So, there's actually two parts of site nine, and the second part is located at the southeast corner of Sero and South Gate Avenue. There's an existing medical office building here. This particular property, H M C, it's actually a developer who's in contract with H A M C has submitted a plan for rebuilding this, and it's undergoing a preliminary review by the city. So, this is actually, if there was any development of any of these parcels, this would probably, this has been communicated to the city staff, would be the first, and that's at fifteen-hundred South Gate Avenue, and would also be re-designated to residential high density in the Sullivan Corridor specific plan, and then also rezoned to R three multiple family residential, and then there's one hundred and seventy-nine units of realistic rezone capacity that comes from this site. One thing we didn't include, there's a parcel at one sixty-nine Third Avenue, we did omit, that's being re-designated from residential medium density to residential high density in the general plan, and that's already got it, the proper zoning, it just was, it, we needed to change the general plan to allow the intensity of development. We omitted that from the, on accident out of the presentation. So, I'd mentioned that there are some changes to the zoning ordinance, so we're changing some sites to R three, but we're also changing some of the development regulations related to R three, and the city notified all of the, all of the people who own property that are zoned R three of this change, and we received a call from one of the, actually the owner of one sixty-nine Third Avenue. Although, we changed their general plan designation, so for, it wasn't for this purpose, but we did notify all of the owners of the R three-owned properties to let them know that their, the development regulations for the properties they are changing, and these are the changes that were recommending, that the planning commission recommended to the city council. So, basically, and this is, again, also mandated by H C D, require that all new development be multifamily residential in nature. And one of the things that the city council will consider is the adoption of objective design standards, because one of the, one of the things that when we start allowing development by rights, normally, we would require a design review, and when design review goes away, we need to have something that replaces it, and the state has told cities in California, that's fine, you can have, you know, you can have architectural standards, but it can't be anything too, you know, lavish, it has to be reasonable. And we will also have our city council take a look at objective design standards when the housing element goes to the, to the city council. There are specific changes that are in, in Attachment D to the planning commission staff report, that we've changed the city's design review section, for example. Anything from a duplex or larger would be subject to objective design standards. If it can't meet those, then it would be subject to design review, in theory, but we, we anticipate that most architects will meet the objective design standards, because they want to avoid, of course, public hearings. And our objective design standards will be somewhat easy to meet, but they will provide attractive buildings, and so I just wanted to mention something about the objective design standards. We are increasing the maximum building height from thirty-six feet to one hundred and twenty feet, plus an additional feet for elevator shafts and rooftop mechanical equipment. And the reason for that is that the building heights need to increase to allow the density that's being permitted, and being maybe required is a better word, and so we do need to increase the building height. We haven't had a whole lot of, the, the marketplace hasn't produced a whole lot of buildings that are this tall, but we, we're, we're changing a regulation to allow it. And then the minimum lot area, so the current minimum lot area is three thousand square feet in the R three.
Square feet, right? Yeah, it's at three thousand.
Yeah, we changed it on the, in the presentation, thank you. And so, in theory, somebody could submit a application to subdivide their R three-zoned property into a bunch of three thousand square foot lots, and so we're, we're removing the ability for property owners to do that. Now, the new minimum will be forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So, we're removing the ability to subdivide R three-zoned land, because when we subdivide land, it makes it hard to put it back, impossible, in fact, after it's sold off, to put those parcels back together and have any sort of apartment complex, for example, built. So, again, that's why it says this will effectively preclude the subdivision of existing small lots in the R three district. There's the maximum lot coverage with, which is seventy-five percent would be also removed, although in, in reality, most apartment builders do provide open space and open areas for parking and things like that, but we did have to remove the maximum lot coverage. And then, the, removing the regulation pertaining to lot area per dwelling unit currently, the R three zone says that you can only have one unit per five hundred square feet of residential, this is in conflict, and it has been for a long time with the city's general plan. The city's general plan is actually what prescribes the number of units that can be built on any property, not the zoning ordinance, and so we're removing that regulation. We are also proposing changes to the city's land use element, and in particular, that, so this is the text of the land use element. We needed to change the number of units that are allowed per acre, and so, I don't want to go through each one of these, but essentially, they're getting, all, all of the residential densities are getting bumped up. We currently have, we actually currently have no maximum, we have a very high density rate designation that anything, I think it's over fifty dwelling units to the acre, has to be residential very high, but we're changing that, for example, that top one to anything over one twenty. So, the residential high-density designation, which a lot of these properties would be re-designated to, if the city, planning commission and city council approve, would be between thirty-five point one and sixty dwelling units to the acre. So, you can kind of do some of the math about the, the minimum number of units that could be constructed, because very possibly, what we'll have conversations with development, developers in the future, isn't actually the maximum density, but sort of this minimum. We don't really have a lot of proposals for, that actually get constructed of super tall buildings. A lot of developers want to build something, at least this is what the marketplace has produced in Daly City, four, maybe five-story buildings, there's some exceptions to this, but usually in that size range. So, anyway, number three is kind of the thing to pay attention to. So, that, the, everything we've spoken about thus far are changes to zoning. So, the housing element also addresses a piece, a new piece of state law, which is the A F F H, and this is Assembly Bill six eight six. And what that bill passed a few years ago, it says that every city, including, of course, Daly City, needs to take meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected...
Do we have that in Daly City, a problem?
It doesn't matter whether we have it, we still have to show that we're going to do this.
We have that.
Yeah.
That's, to me, a...
So...
Ultra-beres.
So, our consultant prepared a list and worked also with H C D staff to a, add to this list, and, and the final result is on the next two slides, that show each of the tasks the city's going to basically undertake to try and achieve this meaningful actions objective. And I'm not super familiar, is familiar with the intricacies of this, but these are the things that we said that we were going to do, and we'll have to undertake throughout our housing element implementation period over the, yeah, until twenty thirty-one.
Point border, Your Honor. You mentioned the concentration of poverty in Westlake shopping center neighborhood. Do we have poverty level here in Daly City?
Oh, there's certainly a poverty level, sure.
I, I know homeless, but not the poverty level. I don't know, how, how do you define poverty level?
There are people who struggle, for sure. And that's actually documented, documented in the A F F H. There's a data section, so...
Well, aren't we saying, I mean, I, I hear kind of like what my colleague is saying, but this is a statistic that they put, they've said poverty is like fifty-eight thousand dollars and low income, I mean, they, this is just some number that the government has put out, which is not necessarily...
Well, in castal economic statistic, when you are earning only about twelve thousand dollars a year, that's your below poverty level, that's what I'm saying. Is that the, the one you are saying it? Because according to the index here, if you're earning twelve thousand and below, you are in the poverty level. Is that the one we are saying?
This is, this, this whole effort is really more to combat segregation and inclusive, and, and promote inclusiveness. It's not necessarily targeted to, that's the, the rezoning program, really, that's targeted more toward the incomes. This includes, and you'll see in some of the policies, it includes addressing income levels, but they're, but they're all part and parcel of a larger problem of discrimination and segregation, and the state has mandated that all cities in California take a look at how city policies may be advancing segregation and discrimination, and take active, meaningful actions, that's the word that's used, the words that are used, to combat that.
Yeah, I know. Because I have been a, once upon a time, a director of shelter network, I, I know, there are people who are rejected because their income is too low. Probably, that's what you're saying. There are a lot of people here being rejected in Daly City because their income is too low, because affordable housing could be, you know, you have to be earning at least ninety thousand a year, that's the affordable housing, to own a house in Daly City. But if you're earning one twelve thousand, you are in the poverty level index, that's a point, economically speaking.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would expect this concept to expand in the future to other elements, such as where the city spends its money on infrastructure and things like this. Sometimes, we see some communities spend, you know, all the, all the money for new roads on the good side of town, and that's something that I'd imagine the state will get further in depth, but they had an opportunity with the housing elements to take a first crack at this, addressing this topic, and that, and anyway, we, we have to comply with it, and this is the way we did it.
Are we here, really, Your Honor, to help the, the poor, or are we helping the city to be stabilized? I don't know what they're talking about here.
We're here to help both.
Both, I feel.
So, this housing element went to the Airport Land Use Commission for San Francisco International, and that commission found that the document was consistent with the airport land use plan, subject to some of the requirements that were outlined in the city staff report, and won't get too far into this, but peppered throughout Attachment D are statements about making sure that anything that's constructed meets their airport land use compatibility plan, so that planners in the future, say, ten years later, somebody, somebody comes and wants to build maybe a five-story building on one of the Seton parcels, that we make sure that the, when the, when the planner looks in the zoning ordinance, there are, there's actually a whole new section that's being added, that, that, because there's no routing to the airport anymore, that's something that's kind of going away, so we need to make sure that there's a, but, but the, the airport does operate, or maybe it's C CAG, operates a, or the FAA, one of those, operates a, a, basically a database of, you plug in the elevation of the proposal, and it, this sort of thing, and it lets you know whether there's consistency. I'd imagine that the city staff will be consulting with the Airport Land Use Commission staff in the future, and that's really the whole point of putting all kinds of language in our document to make sure that that's happening.
Are you talking about the, Your Honor, may I, about noise abatement?
That's part, that's part of what it is.
Because about, I remember about thirty years ago, the airport authority made a, a compensation to some residential here in, especially in Cullen and Geller. They made all the doors, everything is in compliance with the noise abatement law.
Remember, they gave them new windows for free?
Yes, that's right, that's right, about more than thirty-five years ago, I remember. I was still young at that time.
It's, it's, in, in Daly City, it's mostly noise, actually, but there's also other regulations, such as the building height, that buildings go over a certain height, the air, you know, the airport wants to know about it, make sure that, you know, there's regulations about, you know, beacons that need to...
But I love the sound of the, of the airplane.
So, bottom line is, Airport Land Use Commission's reviewed the housing element and found it consistent with S F O's Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And in conformance with SEQA guidelines, the city has prepared, the city's consultant has prepared an addendum that was attached to the planning commission staff report that identifies any of the SEQA impacts that were associated with the housing element adoption. Again, because there's no construction being proposed as part of the element, a lot of these are just policy changes and actually mandated by state law, so they found that the significant environmental impacts were nonexistent, essentially. So, we do recommend that the Planning Commission affirm the environmental assessment, it's the second addendum to the city's general planning I R, and forward the housing element to the city council for adoption. So, with that, our staff presentation concludes, and if there's any questions that, any, any more questions the planning commissioners have, we're happy to answer those, of course.
Madam Chairman, before we go to the open hearing, I would like to recommend that all those recommended actions can be put in a, an omnibus plan of approval for the general plan, so as to avoid any pertaining to land area dwelling unit, so you can avoid the so-called minimum and maximum density of approval. Can we do that as omnibus, meaning all shot, one, to be approved?
If your questions to the city staff, so...
It's not a question, it's a, it's a recommendation.
A recommendation, oh.
All, all your, all your recommendation will be put into one, omnibus, meaning into one for approval, related to be recommended to the city council for approval, because you have to do it in a specific plan, I, I can see it. So, if you can do it just one shot, this will be approved as an omnibus.
He's suggesting that it's part of a more comprehensive general plan update.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm for it, but just don't do it anymore in, in segment or specific, just because, let them read also the city council. Yeah. That's it, that's the main ambition, Your Honor, Madam Chairman.
Fellow commissioners, have any other questions? I, I believe I finish my questions as we go along, so...
I just, I just want to make a comment, I feel like everyone loves the idea of affordable housing until it's on their neighborhood and community and street, you know? You got a new wave of people coming in and out, unfamiliar faces, concerns, you know, but I feel like we really need it. On top of the hill, the Brunswick Affordable Housing, I actually put my grandma in that place, and she really loves it, and the people in the community there is very nice, and I just hope the, the leasing office, the people choosing the tenants, they choose the right ones for our community. Yeah, thank you, Simone.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, we are now open up to public hearing.
Have any cards?
I have cards here, and first is Janice Raymundo, I, my apology, and she will be speaking on the G P A eight-two-four-one-six-six-oh-six.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Your Honors. My name's Janice Raymundo, I've been a resident of Daly City for over fifty years, and I think Daly City is the best place to live.
Like forty-five years old.
Thank you. I'm joined here by my neighbors, and my house is directly adjacent to the property at Seton Hospital that is part of the proposal to be developed. And I'm very concerned that they're proposing to build twelve hundred units plus five hundred ADUs between Ceremonie and Seton Hospital. If we assume a household of four people, that's adding sixty-four hundred residents to the city of Daly City in that small, compact area. The traffic is already getting... The traffic is already getting bad, and the parking is already bad. But for me personally, I look, since the pandemic, I've worked remotely at home 100%. And my view is the beautiful mountain. It's my beautiful mountain, and it'll be covered with a five-to-six-story monstrosity of an apartment building or a residential. And my privacy will be, you know, they'll be able to see right into my house, basically. So I'm very concerned about that, and I'm also concerned about the pressure that it'll put on our services for emergency, police, fire, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next one is Ronnie Miller, and her item wished to speak on is what are the consequences if we do it? If we do nothing? Would you like to speak more on it?
No, I just wanted the answer to that question, thank you.
Okay, well, we are not entitled to answer any questions, but we have our staff here that they will be able to address or even help you with that question. Thank you for that question. Did you want the card?
No, but the, the, the question was, what if?
What are the consequences if we do nothing?
As in?
And to pertain to the, yes.
If there was no, if the planning commission didn't recommend approval, I suppose, to the city council, or, I mean, the, the housing element's going to the city council either way, but if the, if the city council doesn't adopt a housing element, the city will be out of compliance with state housing law, and we can lose funding, essentially. So, I mean, that's kind of the essence.
Are we talking about significant funding and a lot of other things?
Yes.
If I may, so there are a couple sources of funding that the city receives that's contingent upon having an adopted housing element. One is PLHA, Permanent Local Housing, which is money that the city would receive to distribute to developers of affordable housing. One of the projects we have coming up in the future is 493 Eastmore. The city has committed some of its PLHA funding for that project, so if we were not to receive that, that funding, that would be a shortfall for that developer to build that housing. Another program that's contingent upon a housing element is OBag funding, which is One Bay Area. That is money that's provided to the city of Daly City to do street improvements, and that's somewhere over a million dollars. So those would be funds that would be lost, but I think it's also important to note that when we are out of compliance, we are subject to further legal action from developers. So there's this notion of builder's remedy. So if a developer comes in and says, your housing element's out of compliance, and I have a vacant site here, I get to build what I want to build. And that probably would hold up in court, because if we don't have a plan to build housing, then we would be subjected to the market forces that would demand it. So in a lot of cases, a lot of these sites that are shown on here, if a developer were to come in even without a housing element, they would probably still get to build it.
And we'd have no control over it then at all.
I mean, we could try, but it would work itself out in the court system, and we'd have a low chance of success.
Right.
To the chair, we have actually have been sued for this, being out of compliance for the housing element, and we have reached a negotiated settlement, but, you know, it is dependent on the document.
Okay, I hope that helps, Mrs. Miller. I wonder is because a lot of our, our communities are not aware actually of all these regulations? You know, we say that the state is mandated, but how are they able to tap into those information for, for them to understand the reason why we're trying to build and develop housing, you know, affordable housing in Daly City? All I'm urging for to whoever's over here for the same reason is to reach out to our staff, to our staff, incredible staff that we have here, for further questions. They are here for you, and they will serve you diligently, and they will provide you with answers hopefully that will satisfy undoubtness or answer any questions that are bothering, you know, how this incredible or this huge building is going to block your view. So if you, if you can, please reach out to them, they're right here. You're welcome anytime to come in or call them, email them for any other questions. Thank you so much. Okay, we are now closing public hearing.
So anybody else?
Anybody else?
I didn't get a chance to give my card earlier, but I have a couple of questions.
You can come forward.
Come up.
And state your name.
If anyone else wants to speak, tell them to get a card.
And if anybody else wants to speak and didn't have a chance to, to fill up a card, you can still fill up a card, you still have your time.
My name's Eric de Mesa, I'm from also one of the streets that the lady earlier lived at, on Alsicee Court. So my question is, the presentation so far, I think, is driven by two things. One, it's a state mandate to comply with the new housing, housing elements.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Use the microphone.
The, the presentation so far is driven by two things. One is a state mandate to revise the housing plan, and the other is some sort of study that was done to support the, the state request. So my question is, do we, do we as residents have access to the studies and how they were determined? Because this is important. I, I was here like 12 years ago, and the same study was brought up, and I made the question on the basis of the data that was used for that study at that time. So it was late. The data was a, a good five or six years late on what's happening currently.
Yeah, if the question is about how the reno was developed, you'd have to go to the A-Bag site and to figure out how Daly City's reno was developed. But the, the housing element contains the information that explains how we developed, why the various sites were basically the list that was made of the, of the different sites. But the short answer is, is there's actually not very much vacant land in Daly City that's developable. We have some vacant parcels that are larger, but they're owned by the state of California.
Right.
And this, even though we could rezone those, the state requires that there be some sort of developer interest in, if we were gonna rezone something so large especially. So, yeah, it's kind of tricky.
Well, I'm more curious on the projections that they made, you know? So, Commissioner Sotory mentioned earlier that there seems to be an emphasis on low-income housing, but, you know, how many people are in Daly City that are really fit into that category? Because the whole, the whole plan seems to me, it's like you're trying to fit a square peg on a round hole. Whatever area you have, there's a certain capacity or volume that you can put on there to make it comfortable for everyone to live. Right now, though, I see that capacity reached, in terms of parking, in terms of public services, you know, when you put in more people, especially for affordable, affordable housing, you'll encounter problems in security, which means you have to increase your police department staffing to meet the, the safety concerns of the community. Parking is a problem, you know? I'm concerned that there'll be a time when parking will be on sticker type thing, where you're limited to two hours unless, unless you're a resident. And you have to have stickers to park in your own street. You know, so these things are, are, I don't think are part of the study that was done. So just want to know where the study came from. And, and I urge the commissioners to please look at that study before you make your recommendations, because that study will tell you where these things are heading. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alfred.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
I might be ahead of myself with this question, but I also live in Alsicee Court. In fact, these two rows were all Alsicee Court residents. The question I have is, behind our homes, that property, you've got a high spot and a low spot. Now, will they build on the high and in the low? Are they gonna level that off? Because part of that area is lower, it's higher than our homes, but it's lower than San Fernando Way. Is there any thoughts on that yet?
There are no thoughts on that yet. Essentially, when, say, a larger apartment building would be built there, it's very likely that there would be.
Some type of retaining wall?
A little bit of wagging here. Yeah, there would definitely be retaining walls. But, yeah, the parking, there would probably be a driveway that's provided from the front of the property to the rear of the property, and parking would likely be tucked under on the south side of it.
Yeah, now, how, how would the residents, if they do development, how would they get in?
They would access that. But again, it really needs an architect to design something like that. I'm really not, you know, qualified to really answer your question. All we're doing here tonight is making a recommendation to the city council for changing the zoning that would allow a certain number of units, but an architect would need to figure out access issues.
Okay, well, this next question might be out of line also, but with all that heavy equipment that would be there, moving the dirt, pounding everything, there's gonna be cracks in our stucco and cracks in our foundations, who's gonna be responsible for that? There will be damage.
Yeah, that I definitely could not answer for you. I mean, there's, that gets into a section of the law of, you know, liability and, you know?
Well, I'm familiar with some of the damage. I worked at Seaton for 27 years. I was chief engineer when I retired, and I saw a lot go on. And as for your question, the top, Seaton had all 10 floors done originally in 65, but they didn't start the completion of eight, nine, and 10 until 1970, and it took them another two or three years to finish it. That's just some information for yourself. Oh, and one more question for Mrs. Miller there. What's gonna happen with the schools? If you're gonna have that many residents and with that many children, will the school be able to handle it?
So, the city's actually not allowed to disapprove development projects because of the schools about 20 years ago, or actually longer than that, probably 25 years ago, there was a system setup where the schools received a flat fee that's changed, I believe, every year, and they use that to improve school facilities and provide, yeah, public instruction. But, yeah, the, the schools aren't necessarily a factor in what, yeah, development gets approved.
All right, fine, thank you. Well, we'll see you at future meetings, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, before you close the public meeting. Well, just for the information of the people around, I, I've seen all kinds of development here from, because I have been here in the city for almost, almost 35 years, and I've seen it. And in the planning commission, I've been here for, I would say, more or less, for 20 years. So I've seen the growth. And most of the concern of the citizen is first, they will lose their, their view, whether the sun is coming from the east going to the west. Secondly is the parking, they lost that, and at the same time, there'll be a lot of people coming in and out, but that's part of the development, you know? I have been here, I have seen a round of complaints about tall buildings being constructed, like the Kaiser in corner of. The freeway and, and Hickey. Oh, a lot of people went here, I remember that, and I said, it's the end of the world if you build that. And then you also have the landmark. The landmark was very critical, that every, every now and then, they're, they're calling about the city council, you know, but, but actually, when it was built, it was beautiful. After the, the dust had settled in, it's beautiful, now people are clamoring for it more, because it's part of the historical development of the city. We cannot just remain as it is. Part of the development is really new infrastructure, new buildings, wherein the city can also derive beneficial income or generate revenues on this. This is part of what we need, new, new infrastructure, new buildings, and you, it's part, we call it spark growth. And then, in fact, I am part of this, that, the development, but we see to it that, that public safety is also being addressed, public interests. Like the concern of Mr. Alfred here about what will happen, what will, there is always safeguards, I, I guarantee you that. And I have seen those guaranteed, that the safeguards will always be for, for the sake of the public and public safety. So, anything that is for development, sometimes we, 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 sometimes we resent it. Actually, there is a proposal of 50, 50 floors in Sunset, and there are two cooperative groups fighting it out. There is the so-called "not in my backyard," that are those in my backyard, so it's 50-50%, but actually, we, we need housing really, because this is especially in the city. We cannot allow them to go to Tracy or go to Bacerville or go to Baisalia or whatever. So at least in, in a city like, a developing kind, a city like Daly City, we, we really need more of this kind of new infrastructure. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna close public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, well now, forward to the city council the following recommendation. Affirm the addendum to General Plan Eramont, Environmental Impact EIR, to adopt General Plan Amendment GPA-8-2416606 and zone change ZZ-8-24-16607, including adoption of the revised draft housing element and amendments to the general plan and zoning ordinance and map described in the staff new report. You have any motion?
I motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, the roll call, though.
Actually, the, the motion will only be called when there is an objection. That's parliamentary. I don't know why the city council keeps on doing that. But there is, there is no objection. It's carried, unanimous. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Pinoza?
Aye.
Doing the.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'm going in.
Yeah, just follow the procedure.
Commissioner Norris?
Aye.
Aye, myself, Commissioner Sotory?
Yes.
Aye, yes, sorry.
Okay, public appearance, staff communications, are there any? Acquisitions, vacations, et cetera, Section 65602, Apprendice A. Anything about that? Okay, well.
Move that we adjourn. Second motion.
Me too. It's been a long day. Thank you again for being here, enjoy your evening, and have a good week.